Oakley City Council is now in session. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Beaton?
Here.
Bergy?
Here.
Kristofferson?
Here.
Emanuel?
Here.
Gregert?
Here.
Klinkhammer?
Aye. Here.
Lor?
Here.
Weld?
Here.
Worthman?
Here.
Jean?
All right, good afternoon to everyone here in chambers and those of you joining us remotely and again to my fellow councilmembers that are joining us remotely as well. Today is our Tuesday, September 8th legislative session of the Oakley City Council. During a legislative session this afternoon, the councilmembers will be participating either remotely or in person to deliberate and take action on the agenda items before us today. City staff and councilmembers spent a great deal of time preparing for this meeting and again, I am sincerely appreciative and for their continued work and dedication to this community. I also want to thank Valley Media Works and their staff for live streaming this meeting. To watch, please visit ValleyMediaWorks.org or visit Channel 994 on Spectrum Cable. The first item on our agenda is the COVID-19 update from City Manager Peters. Good afternoon, Mr. Peters.
Good afternoon, Council President Weld and members of the City Council and thank you as we take just a few minutes and talk about and reflect on where we're at in our community with COVID-19. As usual, we'll start with just a couple of ways to get information and there has been a few changes. The best source of information is of course, our COVID-19 hub that is maintained by the city county health department. So the best place to get accurate information is to go to our website. Concerning our metrics and statistics, there's been a few changes. Now instead of updating on Wednesday, those statistics are going to be updated on Thursday. So that's being shifted out a day. That is in effort to better coordinate our numbers with the state in the way the timing is being done by the state for their reporting. It also means that when there are updates to the local health order, instead of that coming out on Thursdays, that is now going to be coming out on Fridays. So everything is shifting out a day there. This change in our metrics and statistics is also then changing when we're going to be doing the live updates. Our Health Director, Lisa Guezi, is still doing updates, but those updates are now going to be once a week on Thursdays at 3:30 and they can be viewed live on YouTube at the website and/or Facebook at the links that are shown on your screen. So live updates are now going to be once a week on Thursday at 3:30. Then of course, we have a call center which is staffed to take calls and provide accurate information to members of our community and that number is 715-831-7425 and of course, you can get more information on Facebook or on the website for the health department. As to our statistics, we've crossed a threshold mark of 1,000 cases. As of the most recent poll of data, we have 1,000 people who have tested positively for COVID-19 in Oakley County. There's been 19,162 negative tests. Unfortunately, we've had six members of our community that have died because of COVID-19 and an estimated 859 individuals in Oakley County have recovered from this disease and to date, we've had 41 people that have been hospitalized for the disease in our community. Just a little bit about kind of where we're at this past weekend, the three days from Saturday through Monday, we reported 95 cases. This is the highest three-day total of cases that we've had since March. This is a little more than we had expected and a little sooner than we expected. With the schools opening, we had expected to see an increase, but 95 cases in three days was more than we had expected and perhaps a little sooner. The community spread however, does stay steady. It's still high, but it does still stay steady within the community and because of the higher number of cases, the contact tracing is now in the red category rather than the yellow category. Would also like to point out that in our, on the website that the health department maintains, we now have a map that shows the municipalities that have community or cases in them by municipality and that is updated every two weeks. I would just perhaps take a moment and remind anyone who's listening to this that, you know, the spread of COVID-19 is exponential, meaning it has the opportunity to double very quickly. And our community, meaning the broader community of Oakley and our region, we've got an awful lot at stake with controlling this disease and it really is worth our efforts to try hard to control this disease. You know, doing the things like keeping our social circles small, washing our hands, using our masks and just reminder to everybody that we all as individuals have opportunities to impact where this goes in our community. And it's important that each one of us model good public health habits and that we respectfully ask those around us to do the same. Because frankly, if we lose control of this, what happens is we'll overwhelm the healthcare system and we overwhelm our public health capacity and we'll end up taking steps backwards for our schools and for our businesses and this of course, will have huge or large personal impacts and impacts on our families and impact the quality of life. So we must be careful, we've got to be diligent and we have to respect how fast this can spread because once we lose control of it, it does become very difficult to regain control of it. So just a few thoughts or reflections as we look at those, that current data and what's recently come out. These next few slides are the metrics that are on the website and you can see really under the number of cases, this is organized in three categories. One is disease occurrence and you can see that our percent change has gone from green to red. In the category of healthcare, we are still doing fine with green in both of those categories. And when it comes to our public health response, we've gone from green to red in our contact tracing. When you have 95 cases in three days, that generates many, many, many contacts that have to be traced and followed up on and so a case rate that increases that much taxes our ability to do the contact tracing. In terms of just some general updates, the city's emergency order remains in effect and through September 22nd, we continue to plan for the October drive-through absentee voting and we're going to be increasing our capacity because again, we were expecting probably closer to 12,000 or 16,000 people that are going to come through and use our drive-through voting. We're also going to be adding drop boxes. There will be five drop boxes throughout the city, four of them, or I'm sorry, four drop boxes. So four drop boxes throughout the city. Three of them are going to be located at the festival locations throughout the city. So that provides a nice spread, geographic spread, one on the west side, one on the east side, one on the south side and then at City Hall is also a drop box. They will be uniquely painted red and clearly say City of Claire drop box on them and we are going to be able to pick them up at a minimum, we will check the boxes every 48 hours and sometimes we'll be able to check them every 24 hours. The Elections Commission recommends that you have one box for every 15,000 to 20,000 registered voters. This will mean that we have a capacity of one for every 10,000 registered voters. So we have, we're able to saturate the community with these drop boxes at a rate that's significantly better than even what's recommended by the Elections Commission. One of the advantages to these three sites is they are sites that have people that are there 24 hours a day, they will be under video surveillance and be secure. So it's a nice opportunity to be able to provide more access to dropping off absentee votes in a way that we can keep secure and also in surveillance, under surveillance and geographically spread out. In terms of the emergency executive authority, I guess the emergency orders that we're under, we had two things that, really three things that happened in the last two weeks. In terms of the, with the students returning to UWEC, we've been able to add additional bus capacity because the buses can't hold as many students. So we have added additional bus capacity for routes nine and 19 that is going to be paid for by the COVID relief funds that we've received from the state. And so far, we haven't needed to use the extra bus, but we are making that available and monitoring that situation very carefully. We also approved some temporary sidewalk encroachments for businesses that were placing spacers in the sidewalks. And then finally, in terms of executive authority and emergency operations, the transition at Hobbs continues to work. We have actually Catholic Charities is working with the ownership of the former IGA store in the Shopko Plaza and work has begun to retrofit that for a new temporary facility for our residents that are experiencing homelessness. It is anticipated that they will be able to move that temporary facility up there the first week of October and we expect to have ICE available in the facility and start resuming some operations there around September 19. Finally, just in terms of next steps, as a reminder, the Governor's Order for Masks is effective through September 28th and we are prepared to have a local approach if that is needed before then. We're also preparing ordinances that could extend past the emergency order and this involves remote meetings and how the council can continue to have remote meetings which are currently required by your ordinances unless we're under an emergency order and also how to support the health order going forward when we're not under an emergency order. And on your agenda tonight is the first reading for the remote meeting ordinance. We of course remain flexible to changing conditions and the orders as they may change around us. We're making operational adjustments as you can see as needed and we continue the economic recovery efforts and supporting the response to the Together Plan. Our Health Director, Lisa Guezi, is also on the call and I would certainly entertain any questions that he might have and I know that she's available for questions you might have as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Is there any questions from council, whether City Manager Peters or Health Director Guezi? Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you, Council President and thank you for that update, City Manager Peters. I would appreciate that. I was just wondering in regards to the drop boxes, when those would be put out?
I'm sorry you broke up. I did not hear the question. Did I try to repeat it?
Yep, I'm sorry. When will the drop boxes for the ballots be put out?
I think they're working on them right now. Carrie, do you have a more specific update on that?
We are planning on putting them in place on this Thursday. Ballots will be mailed beginning next week.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Vice President Emanuel?
Thank you, Council President Weld and thank you, Mr. Peters and Health Director Lisa Guezi for all of your continued leadership and strategizing with each new day and sometimes new hour that is upon us. So deep appreciation. I have a question around some of the larger gatherings that has been observed at some of the bars and there's pictures that have gone around on social media. I have been cooped up in my little house, my small little house, so I haven't seen it myself. However, I have seen the photos on social media and I've received at least one email from a citizen who's pretty concerned about really large gatherings at a bar and wondering, I guess, how is the city addressing that and kind of where are we at on that type of situation?
Ms. Guezi or Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Council President and Councilmember Emanuel. I can certainly give a brief response, but then of course, the city can, you know, we can pitch it either way, but from a public health perspective, of course, gathering in the way that is seen in some of the pictures on social media is certainly not a recommendation. We are working very closely with the owners of establishments across the community, but certainly in those situations that you see with the pictures, to talk through strategy and there have been a number of strategies now employed with places on sidewalks indicated for people to space. Part of the reason that people are outside these establishments is because they are following inside the requirements that we have related to number of people and physical distancing. So one of the consequences of that is that there are people congregating outside. So the city has been working along with Chippewa Valley Economic Recovery Task Force and the Health Department to work with those establishments to find strategies to encourage people to not congregate and find ways to space them out as they stand there.
Thank you, Ms. Guezi. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Council President Weld and thank you for these helpful updates today. I have a question following up on the ballot boxes. I'm wondering, you know, I just want to make sure when I'm talking to folks that if I have this correct, once the ballot boxes are in place and people receive their absentee ballots, can they start putting their ballots in right away or is there a date when they'll be unlocked or when they'll be, started to being checked? What would you recommend people do when they want to put their, start voting?
Ms. Friedle?
Carrie, would you like to take that?
Yep.
As soon as they receive their ballots, they can complete them and put them in the drop box. We will start checking drop boxes the day after we start mailing them. So immediately.
Great. Thank you so much. That's helpful.
We're hopeful that residents will find that this is a nice alternative to mailing the ballots.
Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. I guess this is a two-part question to Health Director Guezi, but I wanted to ask about, you know, it's something that I've noticed in terms of establishments, that people are often not wearing masks inside and it concerns me. I actually did have a chance to see Water Street a couple of weeks ago and just the number of people that are in establishments without masks on worries me and the, you know, I think, I guess the question there is just what, you know, what is being done? How are we thinking about how we might have to take a different approach in the community if we see, you know, continue to see the number of cases spiking like we saw in the last week? I mean, it's clear to me that this could really get out of hand and I'm hoping that there's some strategy and thinking through how we might have to change course and think about what's actually essential in our community and make some of those decisions.
Ms. Guezi or Mr. Peters?
So thank you for that comment, Councilmember Worthman. Certainly, the work we are doing is to try and reinforce the actual risks that exist with this, with COVID-19 and really work with community partners to find shared interest in following those practices. So the order and all of our communication are really focused on just what you speak of. We do have concerns and we are continuing to talk to individual facilities. We have through our legal team in Incident Command, we are doing direct follow-up with specific places as we get complaints and we do have a process for that and do know that that continues to happen and we will continue to do that. There are a number of other ways also that we are impacting, you know, working to really change what practices we're seeing locally. So building shared interest has been our primary objective with a lot of conversations and meetings happening related to that.
Thank you for that. Council President Weld, would I be able to ask a question regarding voting?
Certainly.
Thanks and this is to City Manager Peters. I had seen this opportunity, a number of Oakley cities, sorry, Wisconsin cities have applied for funding, grant funding to help with any election needs. Is there, do you see that we may have some expenses where, you know, it would make sense for us to be applying for grants, whether it's to do with poll workers or any of the other logistics to running a safe and accessible election?
Absolutely. So we are tracking the extra expenses that we have for elections related to COVID and will be submitting those through, there's a couple of different avenues and certainly the grant that you just referenced is one of those that we're exploring to see if we can get recovery. So we anticipate that much of the extra expense that we have for conducting the full elections safely will be reimbursed through either the CARES Act or possibly the grant that you just referenced.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Councilmember Gregert?
Thank you, President Weld. Thank you, Mr. Peters, Ms. Guezi. I just kind of want to dig a little deeper on the topic of taverns because I have heard from a number of residents in my district who have, who even feel that, you know, the establishments should no longer be allowed to be open. I guess, I'm not sure if that's something that has even been considered at this point, but one of the questions related to that that I've heard, batted about is the idea of reducing hours and seeing if that would be something that would be of shared interest and be a benefit from the perspective of public health. So just kind of wanted to see what you thought of broad-based approaches that maybe reduce some of the risk maybe later at night with regard to changing the hours of taverns.
Ms. Guezi or Mr. Peters? Mr. Nick?
Thank you, Councilmember Gregert. The Health Department is certainly exploring options with legal about what is possible to do related to all of our points where we see transmission more likely in this community. That's part of the science-based approach we're taking. We certainly, I want to make sure council does understand though, that disease spread is happening across the community because of primarily close social gatherings and those are happening in public and private locations, certainly not exclusively in the environments that I know many of you are getting pictures of. So I do want to be clear with everybody that there is definite concern about spread. Anytime people are closer than six feet and that does include many, many private settings. We also have talked to legal about the specific issue that you shared. Other communities have looked at things like hours of operation, but that certainly is not something that is currently part of our order and there are questions about what is possible with that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Guezi or Mr. Peters? I do not see any other questions. Appreciate all of your work and energy and effort on this continual concern, but I think the message is loud and clear and I appreciate the message from our City Manager and from our Health Director Guezi that really now, it's up to us as a community to start holding each other accountable and others accountable for, you know, all the things that we continually talk about as far as physical distancing and wearing masks and avoiding large social gatherings and we have the ability to slow this down and it's up to us now and I appreciate all of their work and council's work and our city staff and our county staff's work on continuing to get this message out there and continuing to make sure that we're as healthy and safe as we possibly can be. So thank you. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda and do councilmembers have any questions regarding the consent agenda or wish to remove an item for separate consideration? Not seeing any, that a motion by Councilmember Anderson and seconded by Councilmember Klinkhammer, the consent agenda has been moved and discussion is in order. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer? Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
And the consent agenda passes. There are no proclamations today and so we will get started on our business agenda, beginning with agenda item number nine, which is a resolution consolidating the microloan, commercial building facade loan and city revolving loan funds into a single city loan pool. Because this item amends the budget, a two-thirds vote or eight affirmative votes is needed for passage. Good afternoon, Mr. White.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Thank you. And the resolution before you seeks to consolidate the three macroloans or the three loan programs that are currently operated by the city. They were established under the current structure in 2018 and each was started with an initial amount of funding. The city revolving loan fund at $400,000, the commercial facade improvement loan fund at $315,000 and the microloan fund at $100,000. As loans are made out and repaid, the repayments go directly to the program in which they were lent out of. Each program serves a different function. The city revolving loan fund services larger loans and also has a requirement that a business be in business for at least two years to be eligible to apply. The facade loan program is strictly for exterior improvements to commercial buildings anywhere in the community and the microloan fund is the only program that's truly open for startup and entrepreneurial-type startup businesses. In the past two and a half years or since I've come on board in late 2018, we have quite a bit of lending data under our belt now and we can recognize patterns. Since I've come on board, we've made no loans from the facade program, although we do have two that will be coming up shortly. two that will be coming up shortly. We've made one loan from the City Revolving Loan Fund, and we've made several loans from the Micro Loan Fund, to the point where in late 2019, we had lent nearly all of the funds available in the Micro Loan Fund out. It is since seeing repayments being made, but they are, again, it's a slow process, and we currently have one project that is ready to go before the Loan Committee that is only eligible for the Micro Loan Program, and there's not enough funds available in the Micro Loan Program to be able to satisfy or be able to service this loan if it was made. So, our proposal would be to consolidate all the funds available into a single loan program, or a single loan fund, and then we can allocate funding out to the individual programs based on anticipated need. Our estimate for this year is we would expect to shift an additional $50,000 into the Micro Loan Fund, which will allow us to continue making loans through that program. And then each year, as the budget time comes up, we would look at where our potential need is for the following year, and we could make allocations accordingly. The idea behind this would be to make the program a little more flexible, so we can ensure that we have funds within each individual program that's seeing the most need, which currently it is the Micro Loan Program, and make sure that we can address the needs of the business community as far as a lending instrument to help move projects forward. So, that is the basis that we're looking to do in this program. Are there any questions?
Any questions from council from Mr. White? Council Vice President Emmanuel.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. White, for the presentation. It's, I feel a little bit of a presentation on hope that businesses are going to keep going, the city will continue to be a partner with businesses as they grow or have anticipated needs that the city can help out with. I do like the idea of having a consolidation. I think it does make a lot of sense, and I'm wondering about, I guess, two questions. One, on what the city might be considering or could possibly do around the strategic outreach to minority-owned businesses? So, that would be one. And the second is just really around eligible expenses for the loan funds. If there is, I guess, if like outreach materials or outreach efforts to minority-owned business owners could be eligible for usage for these funds, to make sure that more people know that these funds are available and to really kind of demystify that process. So, I'd love to hear some payback on that. Thank you.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Councilmember Daniel. We are seeing a lot of interest in the loan programs, and actually, the banks have become probably one of our best recommenders. A couple of banks in particular have directed several projects our way. We typically will act as either the gap finance in a bank loan, where there's a gap between what the applicant can put in for cash and what the bank is able to lend on the project. We've also had a few where the bank felt it was a very good program, or a very good project, but for whatever reason, the bank was not able to lend against. We are exploring how we can broaden the message out. We have put together some, one of our interns had put together a, basically, a fold-out brochure, also digitally available. We're starting to disseminate that out to different organizations and institutes, particularly the banks, but also looking at any other type of community organizations that come in contact with potential businesses, potential borrowers from our program. We're very interested in trying to reach our message further. We put that together and started disseminating it right at, or just shortly before the safer home order came about in March, so obviously, we haven't seen a lot of, you know, ability to push that out as much as we had hoped. But we are still seeing a number of interesting projects. I've actually talked to several potential loan applicants over the last month or so, and it's typical when the economy gets a little tight that you see projects come forward and show some interest. Folks who are working for the company who think that maybe being self-employed might provide some more stability in terms of employment. So, we are continuing to see those types of interests, but we would definitely welcome any other ideas or thoughts on how to get, how to better get in front of minorities and more minority groups. We have a strong interest in that and would love to see that pushed further out.
Council Vice President?
Thank you so much. Oh, may I have a quick follow-up?
Certainly.
Thank you so much, and thanks, Mr. White. That makes a lot of sense, and good to have our local lending institutions as partners. Do you know if the city has any baseline data around either the participants who, the lending institutions, of who they might be serving as far as kind of that gap financing with the city, and the percentage of minority-owned businesses? And/or does the city have any criteria of just direct engagement with minority-owned businesses and their utilization of the loan pool?
That's a very good question. It's not a metric that's typically tracked, but it's probably one that we could look back through some of our data. I can say that the last two microloans that we did, both of them to women-owned businesses, and I take that back, the City Loan Fund, the one that we did in 2019, it was, pardon, that was incorrect, that one was to a local loan business. One of the EDA loans that we did, which are separate from city funds, that one was to, also to a women-owned business. So, we are seeing some interest from those, from that end of things, but it's something we could probably do better at tracking. It's not a typical metric that we ask or require or identify within the loan documents, but it's something we could probably go back to the records and take a look at. It's also not something that typically to the bank tracking. They may, they may track that internally, but it's not something they typically share with us, but we could get better about asking that question.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Mr. White. I was wondering, I know the city has a revolving loan fund committee, and if that would change at all, or their duties would change at all with the consolidation of these three loans?
No, we would anticipate that that would function the same as always. It would, the consolidation of that loan and disseminating its funds would be more of a staff function. We'd take a look at where the loans are being acquired, you know, which projects are coming into us, and which bucket of funding they are, they are most appropriate to be directed to, and then we would simply ensure that from the main pool, there are sufficient funds in any given program to meet the business needs. We would still need to carefully balance that. Obviously, there are some city loan funds that are coming up. We have a couple of projects that may come out of the City Loan Fund, and we do have a couple of projects coming up that would potentially apply from the facade loan program. But we could help direct those funds as we see applications coming through. As far as approval, that process remains the same. The folks will have to submit documentation that's required. They'll go before the revolving loan fund committee, and they'll make their, they'll make their recommendations or objections on the loans as they do today.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council from Mr. White? I do not see any. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
On a motion, then, by Councilmember Beaton and seconded by Councilmember Lor, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Council Vice President?
Sorry, I had a delay on my end.
No problem.
Thank you so much, and I'll be certainly supporting this this evening. I do want to share feedback and appreciation for the receptivity of the idea of really trying to focus a little bit more on our engagement with minority-owned business leaders and potential applicants. When we think about anti-racist work in our city, I think that's really a key part, because if we can help lift people up as a partner who are experiencing significant financial challenges and/or have some financial opportunities to grow their long-term wealth, that's a great thing. And so, while a lot of conversation does sometimes get focused on law enforcement, I think that our responsibility, at least from my perspective, is that we really take a comprehensive look at how we're conducting ourselves with anti-racist work, whether it has to do with equity and finance tools, to policing, to really holistic approach on diversity and inclusion in our city. So, while I don't have any amendments for this, I do want to pass on that feedback and that encouragement that I think we really should be looking at this and offer myself as a thinking partner with Mr. White on perhaps what could be some mechanisms to do some in-reach with our community to make sure we have more people who are accessing these funds, and then holding ourselves accountable to creating a baseline and then seeing, how are we growing? What are we doing well in? Where can we do a little bit better at? Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Any other discussion in regards to the agenda item? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
And that agenda item passes. Agenda Item Number 10 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with ZEF Energy Incorporated for a solar-powered electric vehicle fast-charging station at the Forest Street parking lot. Good afternoon, Mr. Noel.
Hi, hopefully, everybody can hear me?
We can, yes. Good afternoon.
Great. All right, I have a presentation for you this afternoon. We're going to be focusing at the Forest Street parking lot downtown. Next slide. You may remember back in February, you passed the Renewable Energy Action Plan, which included the EV road map. The EV road map, I call out here, kind of the main tenants of what that plan included, which was modeling the way, which we'd like to see in our municipal fleet and uptick, a 15% of more EVs in the fleet by 2030, building a strong foundation, which would mean adding more public charging stations, whether publicly or privately owned, and then sowing the seeds for transition, with encouraging the marketplace development by 2030, seeing 8,000 registered EVs on our streets. By and large, cities that invest in charging stations do see an uptick in the amount of registered EVs on the road. Next slide. Just to recap market goals by 2030, we'd like to see in our fleet 15%, the community 10%, and Excel Energy, which I'll just note in the next slide, is looking for a more ambitious goal, 20% of vehicles on the road by 2030. Next slide. This is just a recap of their vision that was recently announced, looking to add 1.5 million EVs on the road as more models are released, to save consumers fuel savings, claiming $700 less per year than gas, and also seeing a substantial decrease in carbon emissions over that time period. Next slide. One of the key understandings of the marketplaces, what are the barriers to the industry? In the Public Service Commission, I just wanted to highlight, recently, had an investigation on EVs for policy and regulation considerations. They noted that charging infrastructure was the top concern in terms of reducing range anxiety, so people don't run out of electricity while they're traveling. EVs are a little bit more money. Those costs are coming down as more models are on the road and more competition occurs, and then awareness and education about EVs and charging, and then also just vehicle availability, especially in small markets like Eau Claire. So, next slide. So, just looking at the outlook, this is a slide from Renew Wisconsin, which is a policy think-take on renewable energy and electric vehicles centered out of Madison. They have done research which shows that more and more manufacturers are coming out with different models in the next few years, and as this competition continues, this should drive down prices of those vehicles. Next slide. We're also seeing the technology increase in terms of light-duty and medium-duty trucks. Next slide. And also box trucks. And so, there's more applications in terms of these vehicles. Next slide. Now, I want to center on the grant opportunity before you. We received word about this grant not too long ago, and we needed to act fast in terms to, in order to work with the developer to secure the grant. And this map here shows you the I-94 corridor as it relates to Wisconsin and Minnesota, and this is a part of a larger clean, or clean-fuel initiative from Montana to Michigan along the I-94 route. It's an initiative with the Department of Energy, that's where the grant funds come from, provided to the Gas Technology Institute, or GTI, which holds the funds, working with partners like Wisconsin Clean Cities and ZEP Energy. ZEP Energy, in this case, is exclusive vendor, trinket developer for fast-charging stations within Minnesota, Wisconsin. Along this route, we have, in the counties, over 16 million people, so it is a heavily-traveled corridor and is seen by the feds as an opportunity to deploy fast charging. Because Eau Claire is centered on a fast-charging station, and we've already invested in Level Two charging stations at the North Barstow-Galloway rail, we were able to, working with ZEP, have a double allocation grant, which is $54,000. Next slide. This recaps our project partners. The city is a co-developer of ZEP, where the site hosts at the Forest Street parking lot, where the asset operated, meaning that we can charge fees for customers to use it. ZEP Energy is a trinket developer, bringing their experience of installing these stations in Toma, Hudson, and many Minnesota, Wisconsin, Minnesota communities, and the general contractor and the owner of the unit for five years. Solar forma is exclusive custom solar parking canopy designer, a local firm that is based here in Eau Claire, that we are working with to provide a shelter structure above the charging station, but also to use renewable energy to power the station. Excel Energy will provide most of electricity beyond the solar canopy, and that will be, there'll also be an opportunity for co-branding, as I have mentioned before, with their initiatives for more EVs on the road. Next slide. This information is contained in your memo in the packet, but in terms of city cost, after total cost, the project could range from 120,000, 125,000 to 165,000. There are some, the reason why there's a range there is there's some contingencies. The parking lot does have, in spots, some remediation that may be needed after we do soil samples in what past zones. We have already received the permission to proceed by the DNR, and also some costs from Excel Energy, depending on exactly where we cite the transformer and the electrical infrastructure to upgrade to be able to accommodate the 180 TW charging unit. In terms of operational costs, we project, based off of preliminary fees, to charge users around $15,000 per year, which is in a conservative case of 126 hours per year of looking at different utilization scenarios of EV users plugging in, and with a payback with the solar canopy of 10 years, and that matches the useful life of the charging unit. Environmental benefits, we potentially could see 40,000 kilowatt-hours of renewable energy used in the community for those that charge at the station, and greenhouse gases of 28.3 metric tons. Next slide. Each port could accommodate up to 90 kilowatts. And if there was only one charger, 180 kilowatts, which could basically power an EV about 105 miles per 10 minutes. Next slide. Here is a rendering of the solar canopy. What you'll notice here is a very attractive, elegant design that is mimicking ocean waves or river waves. And again, this is custom for Eau Claire. It would cover the two stalls for the one unit charger with the dual-port access. There's a flexible solar film, or solar panel by Merlin Solar that Solar forma is using to be able to lay these strips on the canopy, and they'll be black. Next slide. And then to supplement the generation that's provided by the solar canopy, Excel Energy already provides about 26% renewable energy or electricity on the grid, and the balance would be covered by going on Excel's Renewable Connect rate. Next slide. This is a site map that shows the intended electrical lines, and mainly from the substation at the lower-left corner, you'll see power would go in the red line to the top of the center of the picture, to the transformer, and then back down to the parking stalls where the EV charger will be located. This is a preliminary design. We will continue to work with Excel Energy and ZEF and the solar, and Solar forma design to refine this design. You'll note that in the yellow line, there's a property line. The city owns both parcels. However, we have restrictions on either side. We want to stay out of FEMA de-restriction land. There's open space requirements and floodplain requirements that are very restrictive. And so we've chosen to cite the main electrical infrastructure, including the Level 3 phase charger, which looks like it's on the other side of the line right now, all on the DNR restricted side of this parking lot. So just wanted to call that out. Next slide. And there is a clause in the resolution before you that notes that there's an impact to the edible garden at Forest Street parking lot, and this circle is roughly the area, about 500 square feet, that may be impacted or that will be impacted. And the clause says that any planting's loss will be replanted in locations that are suitable. Next slide. Couple photos. The photo on the right shows the area in terms of where the transformer, the main electrical infrastructure will be placed, and those, I think it's an apple tree and a pear tree will be removed. And then at the substation, you can see how the power is going to connect from the three-phase power. Next slide. My last slide here is ZEF Energy, Jim Goodman, the VP of Customer Relations, is available also, if you have any questions of him. And the resolution is to enter into the agreement with ZEF to co-develop the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Noel. Are there any questions from council for either Mr. Noel or for Mr. Goodman? Any questions from council? I do not see any questions. Thank you. On a motion then, by Councilmember Christopherson and seconded by Council Vice President Emanuel, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, Council President Weld. I have to thank Mr. Noel for this presentation. It was well-covered in the newspaper, and I think it just shows the excitement from the community and how right the council was in their foresight to really move in a sustainable energy way. It's a wonderful project. These partnerships are so dynamic, and I'm just very pleased to be able to support this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Christopherson. Councilmember Werthman.
Thank you, Council President Weld. Thank you, Mr. Noel, for your presentation and the partnership as well. I just wanted to, you know, I think this is a good project, and it's, you know, this, without a doubt, you know, we've talked about how are we going to make sure that we're moving our community toward zero emissions and 100% clean energy, and these are the kind of projects that elevate visibility and provide access for more EVs, which we've projected, I think, is going to be a 10% of all cars on the road over the next 10 years. So, you know, we, I think we're going to be seeing a lot more usage of these kinds of charging stations. There is obviously an impact to the edible landscape on Forest Street. I believe it was in 2014 when that parking lot was created. One of the things that myself and other council members at the time voted for was to make sure that all of the landscaping that was put in in that area was actually fruits and nuts and berries, with the idea being that people, especially folks in some of our, you know, underserved communities, would have access to. And that passed at the time, and has actually gained, especially during COVID, has gained a lot more interest and commitment from neighbors and gardeners, and even, I believe, JAMF is a part of a new volunteer group to make sure that we're, you know, upkeeping those areas. And, you know, unfortunately, this is going to impact, when I looked, it was two apple trees and a pear tree and a few other berry bushes, which is, you know, is a real impact, but the hope is here, I think, that, that, you know, those will be made right. There are gaps in some of the other areas of this edible landscape where trees have died since the planting of this, which is a natural thing that happens, you know, with most orchards and with most trees. But, so hopefully, there's an effort to make the edible landscape whole again, and I think, you know, this is an important spot where we're seeing people, especially connecting with food, the farmer's market, the community gardens, and trying to think about how we also reduce our carbon footprint by, you know, growing more of our own food in this community. So, you know, I think this is a good project, and just wanted to give a little more context to where it's going to be placed.
Thank you, Councilmember Werthman. Councilmember Gregert.
Thank you, President Weld, and thank you, Mr. Noel, for your presentation and all of your work on this. Yeah, I certainly tend on supporting it. I actually heard from a visitor from Dunn County who wanted to come to Eau Claire last summer for a meeting with their Chevy Bolt electric vehicle, and they were asking me specifically where the charging stations were downtown so they could go to a meeting at Lazy Monk. And I see this location being very convenient for them if they were to ask me again, and I'll probably be passing it along to them for their future visits. So there are definitely people that are, you know, in search of this option in our city and in our downtown in particular. Another thing that I wanted to mention, I think it's, it's great to see like the collaboration with local designers and entrepreneurs. Solar forma is a brand-new startup company here, so it's really cool to see that they're involved, because they've been looking for opportunities, and I'm glad that they're finding the city to be a good partner here. So just wanted to thank Mr. Noel and the rest of the city staff for their work and for the community partners involved in this.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregert. Any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergy? Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Werthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
And that item passes. Again, our thanks to Mr. Noel and city staff and Mr. Goodman. Takes care of our business agenda. We'll move on to ordinances for introduction. First one is an ordinance, rezoning property located on the east side of Justin Lane, south of Arthur Street, from R1 to R3P, and to adopt the general development plan. Agenda item number 12 is an ordinance rezoning property located at 3172 Old Town Hall Road from C3P to R3P, and to adopt the general development plan for a community-based residential facility with 62-unit assisted-living facility, and to grant special zoning permission for the CBRF to be over 16 residents. And agenda item number 13 is a charter ordinance amending Chapter 2.08 entitled City Council by specifically amending Section 2.08.065 entitled Meetings: Attendance from Remote Location of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Eau Claire. Adoption of a charter ordinance requires a two-thirds vote of the elected members of the governing body, therefore, eight affirmative votes are required of the 11 elected council members for adoption. Does council wish to suspend the rules and take up any of these three ordinances this Seeing no such desire, that takes us to announcements. City Manager Peters.
Thank you, Council President Weld. Just two quick announcements. One, if you have not signed up on Friday, the 18th of September, is the Chamber's Eggs and Issues with a Fall Election Outlook. And then the League of Municipalities Conference this year is going to be virtual, like most conferences are these days. That is, that is on October 6th, and so if you'd like to participate in the League of Municipalities Conference or the Eggs and Issues, feel free to reach out to Kathy, and we'll make sure we get you registered. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Peters. Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, President Weld. I just want to let my council colleagues know that the Neighborhood Summit that was so popular and successful last fall is going to be planned again for November. I've invited some partners, and there is a UWEC intern who's going to be supporting that effort. So it'll be virtual, and the date is yet to be decided.
Thank you. Any other announcements from council? Seeing none, and if there is no objection from council, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.